Can you hear us online okay?
Yeah.
We can.
Thank you.
I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 13th, 2025. And there's a notice of op option to recess into executive session pursuant to ARS 38431 dot O2. Notice is hereby given to the members of the commission and to the general public that at this meeting, the commission may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public. And this would be for legal advice and discussion with the commission's attorney on any item listed on this agenda pursuant to ARS 38431 dot O3A3. Can we do roll call?
Carol Mandino.
Present.
Joshua Maher.
Present.
Christine Sheehy.
Present.
CJ Lukey. CJ? I think you may be on mute. CJ Lukey?
Okay.
She's present, but having some technological issues.
Okay. Mary Norton?
Present.
Ian Sharp?
Present.
Megan Weller?
Present.
Thank you.
So this is the time for public comment. At this time, any member of the public may address the commission on any subject within their jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the agenda. To address the commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Is there any public comment at this point? Nothing online. Hearing and seeing none. We will move to the approval of the minutes from the last meeting on July 23rd, 2025.
So moved.
So it was moved to approve the minutes from July 23rd, 2025. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
So that's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Okay, so Mary, you have a?
I do. I have a comment on the portion of 5A regarding the extra conditions that we placed on the Pine Haven development. I just wanted to clarify, and I don't know if it's that important to be reflected in the minutes this way. I think it would be more important that it be reflected in the staff report that goes to council. But right now, it reads there were additional conditions proposed by Vice Chair Norton as follows. And I'd really think that it should be a reflection of that the additional conditions were a result of clarifications and assurances of the applicant for recording as requested by staff. Is there any reason that we need it to read a certain way? I just didn't want to, you know, these are conditions that we as P&amp;Z would not be technically allowed to request. I don't want to, you know, flub up council as they look at our conditions, but these were conditions that were inconsistent with the community meetings and what the applicant presented. And Planner Ben Mihaj asked that we, you know, put it in writing.
I can work with Ben and make sure that that's reflected in his report to council.
Do you feel that it's necessary to edit the minutes? Or are you okay with it?
I think the conditions themselves stay as written. I think that's fine. I think I like the clarification that this is to be consistent with what you told the neighbors, what your, what your proposal was presented as.
So I'll just reread what I kind of quickly jotted down before this meeting, that the additional conditions were a result of clarifications and assurances of the applicant for recording as requested by staff. Would be my only change to the minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's been a request to change the minutes reflective of what Mary had read?
I'd be willing to amend my motion to include the language that Commissioner Norton just stated for the record.
So, point of clarification, would that be that we need to vote on the minutes as presented? Or can we go back and?
If she, if she modified her motion, we can vote on that. We need a second.
Okay, did Ian, Ian, you seconded the motion? Would you accept the?
I seconded.
Change? Okay, thank you. Are there any other additions or edits to the minutes? Hearing none, we'll go for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, looking at the wrong thing now. Okay. So now we are going to move in the, into the public hearing and item 5A, which is Public Hearings, PZ 2500122. It's a conditional use permit request from Charity Lee on behalf of Abbott Roten Investments LLC.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Dustin Stifler. I am the Associate Planner with the current planning team here at the City of Flagstaff. Before you this evening is a conditional use permit request, item PZ 2500122, which is a conditional use permit for a single-family high occupancy housing development at 3426 South Breton Drive. The property is located within the, the official name is the Wedge subdivision, more commonly known as Woody Mountain Estates. The property is approximately 0.46 acres in size, and the proposed use is for a single-family residence that will have five bedrooms and five and a half bathrooms. And it's because of the five bathrooms that I'm here tonight to request the conditional use permit. So our request is the conditional use permit to allow this single-family high occupancy housing development. And it's located within the rural residential zone. As alluded to, this is a new build for a 3,655 square foot, single-family residence. And on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see that this is the proposed site plan for this, this, this home. Proposed floor plan, as previously mentioned, is five bedrooms, five bathrooms. Our zoning code defines single-family high occupancy housing as having either seven bedrooms and/or five full bathrooms. So this, this home is proposing five and a half bathrooms, five full bathrooms, and one half bath. In order to approve a request for a conditional use permit, there are a number of findings that need to be met. The first is that the conditional use is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code and the purpose of the specific zone. So I had mentioned that this zone is the rural residential zone. It's a area of this, or a zone that's geared towards preserving the area's rural, rural character. It's geared towards utilizing and enjoying the unique mountain environment here in Flagstaff, and it intends to protect against premature development on the fringe or on the outskirts of the city of Flagstaff. And so, within the RR zone, a high occupancy housing development is allowed with the granting of a conditional use permit. The second finding is that the conditional use will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. It must be operated in compliance with this permit. No anticipated noise, smoke, odor, dust, vibration, or illumination, no known hazard of explosion, contamination, fire, flood, and no unusual volume or character of traffic. Staff has found that if the proposed project is developed with the, in accordance with the city codes, standards, and requirements, the project should not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. The third required finding is broken down to in these different, or different components that are outlined on the screen, and I'll discuss those in the subsequent slides to come here. The first being access traffic and circulation. This site is accessed via South Breton Drive, which is the main, main street that goes through the subdivision. A traffic impact analysis is not required for a single private residence. Additionally, a single-family HOH development must include at least one parking space per bedroom. And this development, with its two-car garage and large driveway, will be able to provide the five required parking spaces. The next component is adequacy of site, open space, and resource protection. A resource protection plan was provided when the subdivision was platted. And the construction for the proposed request, proposed for this request will be within a permitted building envelope, and tree removal will only occur within that approved building envelope. Next will be noise, light, visual, and other pollutants. It's not anticipated that the proposed uses for this site will create any of the sort, and the site is already and will be well-maintained. Style and sighting of structures in relationship to surrounding neighborhood. The architectural styles, colors, and materials are consistent with the existing materials of other residences within the subdivision. Landscaping and screening, it's, that's odd, sorry. The, it, that's the same note as from the previous slide. But landscaping is not applicable to single-family developments. Impact on public utilities, it's not, this residence will not need any, any new improvements or public utilities will connect to the existing city sewer and water services throughout the subdivision. Signage and outdoor lighting, there's no signage proposed with this use, and any single-family residence must comply with our current zoning code of 5,000 lumens or less. Dedication development of streets, again, this is part of a platted subdivision. There's no new public streets proposed, and no dedications will be required. Additionally, there's no cultural resources that have been identified on the site. The last two extra findings, heritage preservation and transit, both do not apply as the single-family HOH development does not meet the criterion for these. As with all of our conditional use permits, there is a public participation plan that must be followed. The applicant did notify property owners within 300 feet of the subject site via mailer that they have requested a conditional use permit. They also notified of this public hearing for this evening. A sign was posted on the property, and I had a notification ad run in the Arizona Daily Sun on July 19th. The applicant did receive one comment from a fellow property owner within the subdivision that raised concern of the home being a potential rental property. The city and zoning, or city staff, we have no control over whether this becomes a rental property or not. But the comment was noted and heard by the applicant. And so with those findings, in accordance with the findings, staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission approve conditional use permit, PZ 2500122, with the following conditions, that the development of the site shall substantially conform to the plans as presented with the conditional use permit application. And at this time, I'm welcome to take questions. And I'm not sure if our applicant has a presentation or not? Okay.
Okay, so, thank you for that great summary, Dustin. I appreciate it. And do we have any questions? Mary?
Yeah. Do you know if the lots that are within the 300-foot perimeter that had to be notified, are they owner-occupied, or are they still owned by the developer?
I believe it's a combination of owner-occupied and still vacant lots owned by the developer, but I could be incorrect.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Charity Lee. I actually notified every single property owner within Woody Mountain. So I went above and beyond the minimum requirements because when I was looking at the ownership of properties that were 300 feet, it was owned by the developer. So I just went ahead and I just notified everybody.
And then do you know if this property will be owner-occupied?
From my understanding, that's what I've been told, is that it was going to be a primary residence. I don't know what it, you know, the final plans may end up being, but that's my, my understanding.
And then my last question was, you know, we've only seen these within Pine Canyon. So this is the first one that's outside of that. We're aware of, you know, the HOA requirements and restrictions in Pine Canyon to prevent a property like this from becoming a nuisance to the neighbors. Could you tell us a little bit about what maybe the HOA is involved at Woody Mountain Estates that would prevent it from becoming a large rental or a rent-by-the-bedroom, or, you know, out of concern for the other neighbors or the person that actually did have a comment and concern?
The comment specifically was related to short-term rentals, and there aren't, the CCNRs do not prohibit short-term rentals. So I can't, I wouldn't be able to tell you if that would be a possibility in the future. The commenter did say that there weren't issues, that there hasn't been any noise issues with the short-term rental that they were complaining about in the neighborhood. But it is a nice neighborhood that we want to maintain the quality of the, the residents in that subdivision.
So the neighbors would have somebody to reach out to if it became a problem?
Of course. Yeah, it's maintained by the HOA and is still under the declarant control.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Would someone like to make a motion? Mary?
If we can just hold on just a second.
Oh, is there questions?
CJ made a comment in the chat, but the chat's not part of our record. CJ, do you want to say anything out loud so it can be part of the discussion?
No, I was just looking online, and it says there is an existing VRBO rental on the development. So they are allowed.
Thank you. All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the conditional use permit, PZ 2500122, in accordance with the findings presented in the staff report and the conditions.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
So Ian's made a second. Is there any discussion? Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to, and I got to make sure I'm not looking at the minutes. I'm not, okay. We'll move on to general business, PZ 2500028, High Occupancy Housing Update.
Okay. Oh, thank you. It helps if I turn on the microphone. The purpose of the High Occupancy Housing Plan is to provide direction in the form of goals and policies intended to enhance and maintain the city's character and guide future developments that would be considered high occupancy housing. The High Occupancy Housing Plan identified dozens of strategies that could be implemented to address the unintended impacts of these buildings. I do want to note that high occupancy housing under the High Occupancy Housing Plan is not what you just saw. The High Occupancy Housing Plan did not consider single-family homes and did, what, did not intend to apply to that. So staff did get direction to include single-family, two-unit, three-unit, and multifamily, and as well as the multifamily developments in that High Occupancy Housing discussion. As a precursor to any text amendment that's written, we do an internal review. We route it amongst multiple departments. The number one comment I got back from staff was, we need to do something about the conditional use permit for single-family high occupancy housing. It is not included in this text amendment. And because I have a very specific purpose, so, you know, we're open to discussion and feedback. I appreciated the staff comment. I understand the concerns. What I would tell you is we would leave the, the land use of high occupancy, single-family. We just simply would not require the conditional use permit. What we would require is the additional parking. The primary concern with large bedroom, single-family homes is the number of occupants. And at the time, we were only requiring two parking spaces per unit. So that is, fundamentally, that's the biggest issue we run into. Whether there are, whether they are short-term rental, which we cannot ultimately control, or they're long-term rented, or they're owner-occupied, usually generally because they could have a higher occupancy affiliated with them. I would also note that whether you're a single-family or multifamily is high occupancy housing, you do pay more in development impact fees for police and fire. So those things are also already accommodated for. And because there is that association, we would definitely leave that land use unless such a time that maybe even the development fees are changed. But right now, the development fees are oriented towards the number of occupants as well. All right. There's that history. As a follow-up to the High Occupancy Housing Plan, of course, one of the strategies was to amend the zoning code and to create a land use called High Occupancy Housing. That was adopted in November of 2020. However, it had delayed going into effect. So it, it didn't go into effect for several months. It became effective March 1st, 2021. If you want, we can talk about the number of Prop 207 claims that we've received on the High Occupancy Housing zoning code text amendment. They are upwards of close to 200 now. So there are a number of them out there. I will say that the vast majority of them are single-family related or in zoning districts that would only really allow the single-family type housing development and not the multifamily or even the larger mixed use, which is what these were, this, this whole amendment was originally oriented towards. I wasn't going to spend a lot of time focusing on that because that's not the primary purpose of why we're doing this. So why are we doing this? The draft regional plan, 2045, alters the land use categories, or what are known as activity centers. You've probably heard us talk about these bubbles on the land use map. You've probably heard us talk about these bubbles on the land use map. The current, the current high occupancy housing standards and a few other standards that were added at the same time, and I'm going to go through all of these as the high occupancy housing land use, are completely dependent upon those designations. Those designations will not exist if the new plan is adopted. So the zoning code simply won't work. It will make it unimplementable for us, and that would put us in a difficult position. So that is the big impetus for moving forward with this. Staff, again, had that work session back in June of last year to get some direction on moving forward. High occupancy housing has been a big community topic for a long time. It's one of those things that can have an uncomfortableness affiliated with it. There are a lot of people that feel very pro and con about it. But the point is, is that we do need to make some changes here, just because the code relied on the regional plan. It's not, it's not a good thing to have the code rely on a document that can move separately from it. So we want to make sure that the code can function all on its own regardless of changes to the regional plan. And I, just to point out that since the adoption of the High Occupancy Housing Zoning Code standards, the only projects that have applied for conditional use permits are what you just saw. We've only done single-family, we've not done a duplex or a triplex, fourplex, multifamily, or mixed use. All right. The High Occupancy Housing Update included some basic changes to our density tables. Stop me at any point in time if I am not explaining this clearly. But essentially, in our density table, we have always had a, a minimum density that we want you to achieve in most zoning districts, is progressive. We, we definitely want you to, to get to, and that's also a hot topic sometimes. And then we have a maximum density. But that maximum density, we had two different categories. Properties that were in the resource protection overlay and properties that were outside of the resource protection overlay. So my assumption, because I wasn't here when they adopted the resource protection overlay, is that the assumption was that with all of the requirements for resource protection overlay, you wouldn't be able to achieve the base level of density. So they lowered the density allowance for all of the properties in the resource protection overlay. When you think about the city, think of that internal core of the city, probably going out, Sunnyside, Upper Greenlaw, everything that was developed up until about 1990, which is this sort of core circle of the city, but going out still eastward. Those are the areas outside of the resource protection overlay. The resource protection overlay is everything basically a donut around the city. So everything that's been greenfield since is in that resource protection overlay. Woodlands Village is in the resource protection overlay, Timber Sky, Canyon Del Rio, all of the John Wesley Powell corridor, all of those areas are in the resource protection overlay. And we lowered the density standards, or the density limits for all of those areas. For example, from, in high density, the maximum you can get to is 29 units per acre. If you're in the RPO, it's 22, regardless of whether or not you have resources. So I've worked on properties that have been partially burned. That's where we end up locating the high density that we, we could, but we still limited it to 22 units, even though that site was able to handle more. So, um, one of the things that was added at the time of high occupancy housing was a third category. We were trying to achieve higher densities in activity centers. So we made the allowance that if you were in an activity center and you were in the resource protection overlay, you could still have the higher density allowance. Here's the problem. All of those activity centers are changing, they do not exist. We could find ourselves in a position where we're now going to make some projects that have developed under that higher allowance legal non-conforming, because they may no longer be in an activity center. We may take away that right from properties and cause future 207 claims. So the proposal is to not have a different, different, a different density for whether or not you're in the resource protection. One minimum, one maximum. That's the proposal in this amendment. Simple, easy, manageable, because one of the things I think we always try to convey to our developers over time, and this is something that's been very true with even the transect codes, which don't deal with density in the same way that the conventional code does, is that just because you're allowed a certain units per acre, doesn't mean you'll always achieve that when you start applying all of the other development standards. Developers who work in the field and do this all the time, they know that. They know that land itself has a different yield. It's, it's a lot harder for different, like, smaller projects to always understand that it, it's not always possible to achieve that upper limit. It's not a guarantee, right? Just because your property can have 22 units doesn't mean that you always will. So we feel fairly confident that the differential between 22 and 29, between 14 and nine in medium density, between five and six in single-family residential is relatively minor, especially in fact, in lieu of all of the other conversations we're now having in terms of the code, and how our density limitations are probably too low overall throughout. So, um, that is one of the primary changes. And again, the, the impetus for this is the change to the regional plan activity centers. Yes.
So have you come up with a number that is that median number? Like, is it going, you said 22 to 29, let's say, on the other, on that one sec, uh, category? So does that come out to a 25? How are you deciding?
Oh, it's staying with the 29.
Okay, so you're just allowing that range?
Yep, no, no range. I mean, the minimum in the high-density zone is 10, the maximum is 29. So there'll just be one cat, one minimum, one maximum. So whether or not you're in the resource protection overlay will have no bearing on what the density allowed on the site is.
Is this dependent, then, on the resource protection, uh, standards being reduced, then? Because what if they can't make the 29 with resources?
That's what I'm saying, is, is that just because you're guaran, just because you're allowed 29 units an acre, doesn't mean you'll always be able to achieve it, because different land can, um, can produce a different density. And that's been true for out, for out forever, um, in doing residential development in the city. Very rarely is it, it's the very rare project that really can hit all of the top maximum.
Okay, so that really in effect doesn't change. It's for those that had to come in at 22, and they didn't have a whole lot of resources, and they could have achieved higher, it now allows them to go higher?
Yes, so really, the reason for doing this is because we slowly granted an additional allowance to some properties that we may now maybe ta, again, taking back away because we're moving that designation in the regional plan. That's the real reason behind it. But I will tell you that overall, we're looking at increasing densities across the board. So, and we'll be back in the future with that. So staff feels not concerned about going with the, the upper range of the zones at this point. Okay. So, just an example, for example, here's a pretty good site that had no resources on it. This is Little Scottsdale, Aspen Village at Aspen Place, uh, which we lovingly refer to as Little Scottsdale. You know, this was a green, or this was a brownfield site. This is also in the resource protection overlay. The development here is very urban. The residential was held to 22 units an acre. And it could have achieved 29. So in a world where we're trying to increase the number of housing units and do all of those things, this is a pretty good instance where that didn't work. Now, this is now in an acti, this is currently in an activity center. And so now it would allow it to be 29, but at the time it was built, it stayed at 22. All right, so other provisions in high occupancy housing that are also tied to the regional plan include, and these are all for high occupancy housing developments and mixed-use developments that are over four units. So think of the, these are the big ones. These aren't, these aren't the projects you guys have been seeing, these are the big ones. So the big ones right now are required to be located inside of a pedestrian shed. So these projects require conditional use permit. The only place you can apply for the conditional use permit is in an activity center. So if you're sitting in between two, or if you're sitting just outside of one, you can't even apply for the conditional use permit. So we've just null and voided, uh, your ability to go above 29 units an acre. The problem with that is the transect zones. And many of the properties in the transect zones have been adversely impacted. And would you say we've had any developments in the transect zones since the adoption of this code?
No.
There you go. We broke the transect code. So, um, transect development generally is almost always a higher density. So we are not, we're, we have a non-functioning portion of our zoning code at this point. So we either need to look at making our transect code a little bit more functional, or we probably need to think about removing it, because it's just not working the way it is. Additionally, inside of a pedestrian shed of a regional activity center, um, it starts to limit, uh, more. So if you're in a regional activity center, then you could go above 50 dwelling units an acre, or 125 bedrooms per acre. We don't have regional activity centers anymore in the regional plan. The draft regional plan only has urban centers, suburban centers, or rural centers. It doesn't have the designation between neighborhood or regional, or historic. So those don't exist anymore. So we don't have that ability to, to scrutinize density between the type of activity center. Also, we have standards about high occupancy housing in the commercial zone. We require that EB 300 feet from the center line of a street classified as a commercial corridor. We don't really have the commercial corridors anymore, um, in the general plan. So there will, um, and then there shall be an existing primary mixed-use development, affiliated with that commercial corridor. So there's some language there we need to remove and fix to, uh, make this code work. So, um, there are a few more standards based on the regional plan. And this gets towards historic activity centers. And like I said, we won't have historic activity centers any longer as well. So we had building footprint size limitations based on if you were in a historic activity center, and then the zoning district. So you were anywhere limited between 5,000 and 22,000 square feet. I would note that the historic activity centers are over where you would typically want your high-intensity development, which is in the downtown, and in the surrounds of the downtown, knowing that we also have historic neighborhoods that are mixed of single-family and smaller commercial as well. So understanding that character, there, there's a, there's a push and a pull here happening. All right. So what are we proposing to do? So one, I talked about simplifying this density table. This is what it would look like. There's the minimum, there's the maximum, and that, that's as simple as it gets. We also need to update the bedroom density. So one of the things that was added in the code was a bedroom density, which is, is actually a really good tool for, especially in a, in a town that has a lot of housing projects that like to go on the higher end. So to achieve that mix of housing units, this was a successful tool. However, it had that same limitations based on whether you were in an activity center or in a resource protection overlay. So again, just simplifying, going with the men, going with the max. And then we are proposing to modify the definition of four units and greater high occupancy housing. We're changing one word from or to and. So let me tell you what this is going to do and the why, because this is the one change that is really not related to the regional plan, but we're hoping will bring some life back into our transect zones. So transect zones are the one place where you can exceed that 29 units an acre outside of getting a high occupancy housing conditional use permit. Before the code added high occupancy housing, mixed-use category allowed you to go over 29 units an acre in the conventional zone, that's now mixed-use. In the transect zone, though, based on your building type, your building type would allocate the number of units you could have. Many of the transect prob, projects that we have currently constructed in the city far exceed 29 dwelling units per acre. But they don't always exceed 72.5 bedrooms per acre. So not all of those projects were five bedrooms, four bedrooms. There are a lot of those projects that are smaller bedrooms, they're regular single-family homes, they're two- and three-bedroom units. A project I recently saw that cannot apply for a conditional use permit because it's outside of an activity center, wants to use the transect zone, it's 20 units. All 20 units are studio and one bedroom. So it's 60 units an acre, and it's 60 bedrooms an acre. By changing the or and making it an and, that you have to hit both to be considered high occupancy housing, we're building in a little bit more room to utilize those transect zones, and we're opening up a little bit more density in the code. So that's the proposal here. It does not allow the hub. The hub would not meet the standard, which is also a project that used the transect zone. It's not called the hub anymore, but, um, it, the, on the larger mixed-use projects, the projects that come in that are primarily four and five-bedroom units, they would never meet the standard. But this will allow those intermediate-sized projects that come in with that bedroom count that we're all a lot more comfortable with, and help give that sort of breadth of, and variety of housing units in the community. Somebody that I've worked with over and over and over again is like, it's just so difficult when you treat, in terms of just plain density, when you treat a five-bedroom unit the same way as you treat a one-bedroom unit. So if your property is allowed five units, you know, and in this town, the way rents are and everything else, if you're a developer and you, you're gonna go for making money, I mean, it makes sense to build the five-bedroom units, we're not being very encouraging. So, and it's hard to say that five, five-bedroom units have the same intensity of development as five one-bedroom units. So, again, trying to bring back some flexibility in terms of the giant, in terms of the overall range. And this still gives, uh, a developer an opportunity to choose. Do they want to have fewer units and maybe more bedrooms? It gives them, right, it doesn't penalize one way or the other. And it still stays within the framework of what the High Occupancy Housing Plan was intended to do. So the code amendment as written also removes the requirement to provide alternative floor plans. Essentially, we were going to require as part of the conditional use permit, a developer to basically develop two sets of plans, which is hugely expensive, with the assumption that somebody would go to the cost of building a development that maybe later they would decide they didn't want, which it does happen. I mean, we're definitely trying to encourage adaptive reuse. I'll be here in two weeks to talk about adaptive reuse. But adaptive reuse projects are hugely expensive. If you don't build that project, I, honestly, this is one of the feedback points of, why would we require you to design two different buildings? We don't require that for any other land use. It doesn't benefit the city, we don't actually get anything out of it. I think it, there's a feeling like maybe there's some insurance policy that if NAU were to close its doors, and note, we didn't have this need for five-bedroom units, that a developer would all of a sudden need, like, the market's going to collapse, and all of a sudden, we're going to need to convert all of these units. I haven't seen it so far, I'm not sure that we're going to hit that point. We also are removing the requirement for an HOH project to be located in an activity center. So the idea here is, is that you can apply for the conditional use permit regardless of that location or designation in the regional plan. There's a fix, don't worry, hold on. We removed the limitation on the size of the HOH projects in different categories of activity center. Keep holding on. Requires a conformance analysis with the regional plan and any applicable specific plan for an HOHCUP. So what does that mean? When you review a conditional use permit, there is not a regional plan analysis done. There is not an analysis of the goals and policies of the HOH plan. That's what we're trading that out for. So the HOH plan gives guidance about where the higher-density, high occupancy housing projects are preferred. So that's the plan that we're going to go back and rely on. But instead of taking the components of that and putting it in code as if it's codified, it's now a conformance analysis. So, does that make sense? Yes.
So how I'm understanding that, as it relates to us who grant CUPs, is that this, since these are allowed uses with a CUP, and... and many times we've been told, sometimes that's hard to support or
Deny.
Deny, I'm sorry, deny. So if you do this conformance analysis, it takes a little bit of heat off P and Z.
It does.
Because we would have to depend that you're holding them to the line on, is this really an appropriate use in this specific location that they're asking about, that's not in a certain, you know, corridor or center or wherever.
So the high occupancy housing plan has specific goals and policies about where these types of development are most appropriate. And it does identify certain areas. I mean, those then got converted into activity centers. But that linkage to all of that information is still in that high occupancy housing specific plan. It still all remains there, right? So it gives, and there's much more in the high occupancy housing plan than there actually is in the zoning code text amendment. So it actually gives you a lot more ability to review a high occupancy housing development and say, yes, you're definitely checking the boxes here of the high occupancy housing specific plan. It gives you a much better framework than just the standard findings of fact for a regular conditional use permit.
Thank you.
It also replaces that footprint limitation, that 5,000 and that 22,000, and it doesn't rely on historic activity centers, but instead it relies on historic overlay zones. So if you're in a historic overlay zone, that's where the building footprint limitation comes in. It's not a perfect match. But it gets us a lot further in terms of meeting this objective. And again, that conformance component is a big reason, that conformance with the high occupancy housing plan because it so focuses on those historic areas if you're not a historic overlay district, which we do have a new one heading its way towards you soon for part of the South Side. So that's really exciting. You know, that's, that will also help with that analysis in terms of appropriate location within those historic neighborhoods. The code removes the limitation on the size of HOH. I already have that. It, it also updates the waste management and crime-free multi-housing requirements. So there's a whole slew of waste management. It's all about requiring recycling in the building. I worked with sustainability staff. We just merely simplified that language. In terms of crime-free multi-housing, I reached out to the police department. I consulted with them. Right now, the way the code is written, it wouldn't be possible. There, there's this requirement that you participate in these trainings. They haven't actually occurred since pre-pandemic times. The original high occupancy housing plan actually doesn't even call for the crime-free housing. What it calls for is there be a safety plan. So that's been switched out. It's now a safety plan that's reviewed by the PD. What PD really wants is connection with that developer and with that property manager. And then it also, most, but I will tell you that most renter, or most apartment complexes already include all of the lease provisions of crime-free multi-housing anyway in their lease. It's pretty standard. Because it gives them a lot more authority to evict people if the police are contacted or called to those sites. It also modifies the location requirements for mixed-use, high occupancy housing developments. It's now based on whether or not we've designated an arterial or collector corridor. Instead of using the commercial corridor designation in the regional plan, we're now focusing on our arterial and collector standards. So just, we're just switching out terms. We're not changing really the meaning or substantive value of what was there before. We're just replacing it with things that are codified. And then that's the end of today's discussion. And I am open to any comments or questions that you have, direction that you want to go. What are your thoughts and feelings on single-family high occupancy housing? You've seen the bulk of them. Tell us what you'd like us to do and, and we'll go forth and prosper.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Thank you Tiffany for your presentation. And you don't? Okay. Mary, okay, so who, who online? CJ? Let's go with CJ first.
Okay, thank you, although I'm sure my other commissioners will probably come up with even better questions. I, I was happy to see the historic communities were included, the overlays. And I'm glad to see that South Side's coming in with one that's gonna be wonderful. I am concerned though, I've probably talked to about 400 people in the last couple of months. And the general consensus of people is that they don't want more development where they have five bedrooms and two bathrooms, where it's geared towards more a student population. So I'm a little confused about what we're talking about, if that's what we're trying to increase with this. So that's my question.
Sure. So you know, the unfortunate side of high occupancy housing is that it's aimed towards college students. And as a mother of somebody who's about to just drop their son off at college, I'm upset with that. We should not be singling out populations in our community. These are, these are members of our community. They are populations that are well-deserving to be here. And without NAU, our community would not exist. So that's an unfortunate side effect. I know people feel certain com, you know, they have certain feelings about students and student-oriented complexes and it's unfortunate. Our community needs housing. Our goal is to provide that housing. We are in the process of amending our regional plan and our regional plan designations are changing, which makes this code no longer work. We are merely trying to replace what exists with other more codified responses or answers. We're not trying to substantively change what the, the original community concern was or to address the community concern, except for that one alteration to the definition, which will hopefully make the transect codes a bit more functional and get back to the development that was then desired in 2011 when we adopted the transect code to begin with.
CJ, does that answer your question?
Yes, yeah, it does. Thank you.
Okay, do you have any other questions or concerns or ideas?
Not right now.
Okay, and then we'll go to Mary.
Well, I'll start with, you know, my interest and concern on HOH, HOH goes way back. When I moved here, it was right in the middle of the hub. And then, in a couple of years after that, there was a development near my community that would have triggered. Well, it wasn't going to trigger HOH because HOH wasn't in place yet. Anyway, it was, it was a bit messy. And so I partake of all of the meetings along the way, including way back when Dan Seimer had your, your job before you took over when this code was written. And there were community meetings and citizen input at that point. So I, I feel somewhat protective in a odd way about changes to this and to make sure that we, we don't lose what the initial intentions of creating an HOH-specific plan. A lot has changed since it was written after many of those student-oriented, five-bedroom, five-bath-type developments were in place. It was also several city councils ago. So, you know, I don't know if that has changed. You know, the city council that gave you the input back in, you know, after it was adopted, you know, how they're currently feeling about it. I get feelings of it going both ways. You know, we still want multifamily housing. And I don't consider it a, a loss when we haven't had HOH developments come before us that are the large projects, because I, we've had plenty of apartment complexes come before us. And that's, I think, what the community wanted. We didn't want it to be focused to the five-bedroom, five-bath student housing. We wanted it to be an appeal for everybody, workforce, young families, renters of all types. But obviously, location comes into play when we're dealing with something that falls into the HOH where the bedroom-to-bath ratio is, you know, one-to-one basically. I do think that there's gotta be a way, and I know we've talked about this, especially when we've had, you know, the, the large estate homes come, come before us, is how do we get those duplexes and triplexes and, and such in, in here and through the code that would allow that kind of housing that might actually technically be an HOH. But there's a place for that missing middle and how do we accommodate that? I just wanted to make sure. There is no removal of any CUP process on any of this. Is that correct? Okay.
Not even for single-family?
Okay, so I'm good with that. And I'm good with this idea of the conformance analysis that gives us more to work with, more for all of you to work with, us to work with, council to work with. In the findings that you've stated in your staff report, as far as like finding number one, does, which, which general plan are we trying to be consistent with as you make these plans? It's kind of like a chicken and the egg kind of a thing. Are you having to go against 2030 or the new 2045? And it, this has come after the 2045 is adopted?
So Sarah and I have worked closely together throughout this to make sure that I'm in alignment with both 2030 and 2045. So I'll show you how we're, this amendment is not out of conformance with either 2030 or 2045.
And, and I would imagine like on finding two, as this goes down the road to public hearings, that the public will be very interested because of the last 10 years.
Sure. I mean, I did hold a public work, works, I mean, I held an open house. I think I had two people show. But I mean, it's the zoning code, not many people are super excited. But I have been trying to talk about this for a while in terms of, I mean, hopefully you weren't surprised that this was coming. It, you know, we've had this out there for a while, but we know that we'll have to, if we wait until the regional plan is adopted, we'll be in a, in a, in a flux right then and there. And so this is our goal to try to be in alignment. I feel very comfortable now with where the regional plan is going. You're about to see it soon. I think you have your work session in two weeks. And so it feels pretty solid at this point. That's not gonna go back to these other standards.
So does this in essence allow an HOH with a CUP to be built anywhere?
So, no and yes. So right now, if you're single-family duplex, triplex, there are no area locations. As long as that's a permitted use in the zone or conditional use permit in the zone, I should say, because all HOH requires CUPs. You're, you're golden. There's no requirement that you're in an activity center. This, this, the, the activity center component applies to the four units and greater, all single-use residential and mixed-use residential. So the larger projects essentially is what that would end up being, are the ones that are tied to activity centers. Those also have limitations on which zoning categories, right? So a four-unit and greater high occupancy housing is not permitted in the rural residential zone. It's not permitted in the residential single-family zone. It's not permitted in the R1N zone. Where it could be permitted is high-density residential. But the high-density residential zone is never really gonna let you go above 29. The only place you can go above 29 is in the commercial zones. So for the most part, where you're gonna see HOH is in the commercial zones.
So as I was reading your staff report in preparation for today, I had to go pull up the copy of the new regional plan and print out those two pages that has the new land use, since we're getting rid of the activity centers. So where this applies to these new land use categories, does that mean that an HOH could be built in any of the centers? And any of the, I mean, like, we'd allow it in, obviously, we'd allow it in all of the urban corridor and the suburban corridor. When you would allow it, would you allow it in all of the urban center, the suburban center, the rural center?
So I can't remember the density cap in each of those, but yes, we would be looking at those. And generally, we, so rural centers, I don't think the density is, is high enough. But in the urban centers, the only way to hit those densities is to be high occupancy housing.
So I guess it would make sense, obviously, the urban center and urban corridor, it would be allowed in. My concern would be, is it allowed in suburban center and suburban corridor?
I believe the density levels go above 29, but I, I'm sorry, I don't have that memorized in the suburban center.
Maybe we can talk about it at the next meeting. And then for the next meeting, would you be able to share with us your presentation from today? It wasn't on our attachments available.
So you want to know suburban corridor and suburban center?
Yeah, if an HOH would be allowed.
I mean, technically, anybody could apply in any one of those places, but as staff, we would guide them that this is where the regional plan is, is wanting these, this level of density. Yes.
Okay, and that's all I have.
That was very thorough. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns or ideas? Yes.
Madam Chair, Tiffany, thank you for that presentation. As always, it's quite excellent. This might be just a, kind of a side comment. About two or three weeks ago in the Arizona Republic, they had a pretty extensive article on the changing regional shopping centers. And what's happening, did you read that? And so it was pretty interesting. A lot of them had started to transition because most of us know it's pretty typical, the large users, the Dillard's, the JCPenney. They either have a very low and no rent and they have long-term leases because they were driving traffic. So it's amazing what they've, they're ripping a lot of these large shopping centers down. And I look at the Flagstaff Mall and we're talking about removing the activity centers. That could end up being like one of these where it's a lot of mixed-use housing, restaurants, services, and it gets very dense. And are we allowing that kind of, would the high occupancy housing be possibly a part of that? Or, because that seems like it's on the horizon. The article talked about four or five major shopping centers. You know, and I've lived there since 79. And it's amazing how many are now converting to almost like an activity, what they would call a entertainment activity center with all kinds of stuff in there.
Yep. I just, I attended a conference where they were talking about the new development in Phoenix, the conversion of the mall and all that it took and how they even had to clean up all of the entitlements of the mall. And it, it's just, it's so very interesting and complicated. You know, what I'm gonna tell you is, is that this is the first step, it, making some changes into the high occupancy housing, seeing where we are and where we go and what the appetite is for it. Knowing that we actually pretty much have to make some changes. But, you know, when, if you've been all following the, the, the last cap project and what the code analysis project is talking about in terms of increasing density in the zoning categories, we're going to be able to accommodate over 29 units an acre in any zone, we're going to have to change that high occupancy housing designation. So, you know, what are those upper density limits that we're willing to include or allow by right? So there, I, I mean, I want you all to be prepared. That's where the conversation is going.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Mary?
Just wanted to double-check, I guess. So the, the bedroom-to-bath ratio, that's still part of the, one of the triggers?
Yes, it just might not be. It's that 29 units an acre, when you go over 29 units an acre, trigger. And again, we also have the ba, the bedroom density as well. I don't know that we'll be changing the bedroom density. I mean, the numbers might have to equalize.
The bedroom mix that's?
So there's the bedroom mix requirements. At this point, we're not proposing any changes to those. It's the overall density of what we're allowing by right in each zoning district that's gonna conflict with high occupancy housing.
I guess that leads back to how does this address the high occupancy housing that triggers individual, there's something in there, I forget seeing it, where it triggers that if it's a single-family dwelling, we won't, it won't need to, or will staff take care of that?
So the single family, the duplex and the triplex, it's all a bedroom ratio in those? That it's not a density, it's the bedroom ratio that triggers getting the conditional use permit?
So did, I thought it was a bathroom ratio too.
Well, it is, yeah, it's the bedroom bathroom ratio, sorry. Yeah, so like, for example, you saw a five-bedroom home today, which I would not, like five bedrooms alone, but because it has the five full bathrooms, that's what triggered it to get a conditional use permit?
Right, so where's the language that takes that out of this?
I have not done that. I have left that language as is, because there is no regional plan change that would require it. I just wanted to share with you that that was the number one feedback that I got from staff, was that they take a lot from a lot of people, and I've heard it. I've heard customers come to the counter who are building very large homes, and they're very frustrated when they have to delay their project and spend the money to get a conditional use permit. It's tough.
So that keeps it still in there, and they're still going to have to pay?
Yeah, right now, single-family homes are still in there. So that was kind of posed of a question to you is that, you know, are you seeing the benefit in keeping the conditional use permit for single-family homes?
Is there a way to streamline that in a more efficient way for them? I mean, you know, we don't have a problem typically when we see estate homes coming in on Pine Canyon, even Country Club, Woody Mountain Estates, you know? But if we saw one of those in the middle of downtown or in a non-compatible area, you know, that didn't match its surroundings, then yes, it would be a red flag. And we would, I think we would all want to see that, the neighbors would want to see that. I know you can't discriminate against different properties, and that's kind of been the crux of it. But is there a way to streamline when there are certain provisions?
No, you're either, I mean, a conditional use permit requires a public hearing. We have to notice within 15 days. You have to do, like, all of that is set out in state statute of all of the things that you have to do for a conditional use permit. The only thing we could streamline is not doing the review of the building plans, I guess. But you would want to see the plans, and you'd want to see the location. And anybody going to a public hearing wants to see what the project is. So, I mean, in that regard, I mean, there's no IDS review or anything like that for the single-family homes. What generally happens is somebody submits a building permit. They get caught in building permit, and then they're not happy. That's how the process works.
Would there be a possibility to do like a square footage of the home limitation? Like if you have, because a lot of these high occupancy, they don't have other bedrooms, other square footages. So would there be, like, if you have a single-family home with X square footage, and you have five bathrooms, it's permitted by right? I mean, it's some way?
We could certainly look at changing what the definition of high occupancy housing, single family is, and triggering that. The biggest concern with high occupancy housing, single family, has been parking. And what we would tell you is that we can keep, we can keep the land use, and we can keep the parking standard for high occupancy housing. So if you want to build an eight-bedroom, eight-bathroom house, you got to have eight parking spots. And that's going to be the limiting factor in Southside. So to have a lot that's big enough for your house and to provide the eight parking spaces, that could be the feeling that the issue is still being resolved. I mean, right, we can't really control who lives in a house. There's all these things we can't control. So we, as planners, we always try to say, well, what's the problem? What's causing the irritation? What can we control? And what we know, and the complaints that we received on those projects, was the parking.
Mary?
And yet, there's discussions going on about the parking requirements, reducing those or lifting those or removing them. So, I mean, in a future world, would that fix itself in essence?
It could. I mean, we could all, so here's an example. So middle housing. The state statute requires that we allow fourplex, triplex, duplex, townhouse, anywhere we allow, single-family. We've chosen to take in that citywide. We cannot require more than one parking space per unit. Okay? But in this amendment, I'm leaving the high occupancy housing definition because it has its own parking requirement. So if you're not high occupancy housing and you're a fourplex, then you can do the one space per unit. But if you're high occupancy housing, so you have the higher bedroom to bathroom ratio, then you have the higher parking calculation. And I'm going to see how long we get away with that for, but I don't know. Until we recalibrate overall what parking is going to look like. We're trying, we've got this big project coming, but in the interim, we've got to make all of these little changes to make us compliant with the state.
So I probably won't be around in 2050, just giving you this. You know, in 2050, we may have a problem with, you know, flying vehicles hovering parking spaces above their houses, and then people are going to be really upset because the view shed will be gone. So just so you know, that's going to become a problem in the future. Sorry.
And I won't be here writing code anymore either. So that will be somebody else's problem for a different day. You know, the zoning code is not a perfect tool. It can't solve all potential problems everywhere. It can do the best to mitigate or offset what are anticipated impacts in relation to development. I mean, that is its ultimate goal. So I'm just letting you know, the earful that I received from staff, I said that I did not feel comfortable moving forward with that change at this time without some type of concurrence with the board that is reviewing these applications and whether or not you're seeing the value to them.
For what it's worth, I don't see much value in it. You know, just this last public hearing, I feel like every time we get those, it's a rubber stamp. We just go through it, everybody goes to the motions, a lot of money and time are spent. I'd be happy to get rid of the whole process.
I would agree. I, you know, for those single-family permits, it's just, you know, we do ask some questions, and neighbors, I've, neighbors have very low concerns. The only one I can think of was out in the, in Continental area, that somebody had a concern about, I think it was probably about parking. So, you know, if there's a required parking, and if they're not going to meet that, then they have to come for a CUP. But other than that, I think it's a waste of time for the builder. It's a waste of time for the owner. It's a waste of time for us, because I think we all realize that high occupancy housing wasn't, it wasn't supposed to trigger that, but it does trigger that. So there would be, to me, it would be great if we could find a way around that problem. And I guess staff has that same, you know, thought.
Yeah, I think the proposal, if we came back, and, you know, I can prepare two different options for you all for the public hearing, would be to leave the land use, high occupancy housing, single family, to leave the parking requirement, but just simply to remove the conditional use permit.
I think that we would agree with that, Christine.
Yeah, I would agree also, because the other thing is with this high occupancy, like the five bathroom, the five-bed, when you look at what's happened with these short-term rentals, a lot of, they're putting these in a lot of communities. Well, we can't control those either. So we're kind of, why bother? It creates a lot of hassle for the home builder. Or if somebody does want to build this really big expensive home, then you've just saddled them with a long process. So I agree with everybody else. I don't think the net result is very helpful, because we end up having to approve them. But I do agree with you, keep the parking requirement. Even if it is a big expensive home, it's on a big lot, and they can easily make extra parking spaces. And they usually would have them anyway. So I think.
Is there anybody online who has any comments or concerns?
Alicia, if you want to unmute yourself and make comment?
Can you hear me?
Can you speak a little louder?
Yes, so my question is, it's with all these changes and all of this high occupancy building that's happening, I'm just wondering, it sounds like the bottom line is pretty much any of the HOAs that are applied for will be allowed to be squeezed into any available open space. As an example, there is a case before you for the Stone Ridge condominium community, which they want to locate between the houses that are on Locust Street and the Foots Trail behind the housing property. I just, does anybody want to address that? It just seems like there's pretty much a rubber stamp on all of these high occupancy housing complexes. And with all of the different areas that have now been removed, it sounds like there's just one area that qualifies for it. Maybe somebody could explain to me how that fits in, because this, I'm under the impression that this is not an activity area up here with all the residential housing and nothing other than the church between where they want to put this Stone Ridge condominium and the houses located along Locust Street?
Tiffany?
Yes, hi, thank you so much. So the Stone Ridge condominium project does not meet the definition of high occupancy housing. It does not exceed 29 dwelling units per acre or 72.5. It's just standard multifamily. It's a subdivision. It's regular development. So this text amendment and this develop, or this land use does not apply to that. But it has never been, it has never been the goal with this to stop or prohibit available properties for development from even being developed in accordance with the zoning code.
Thank you. And did we need Alicia to state her full name and address? So Alicia, if you could state your full name and address, I forgot to ask you that.
No problem. It's Alicia Flurkwin. My full address is 744 North Locust Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So just, can I just clarify that? Because from what I've seen, it looks like there's going to be 52, I think, or more, multiple bedroom units within that small strip of land. And they're going to have to relocate the Foots Trail to fit that in there.
Alicia, I'm, I believe that staff has sent you an email and reached out to you about that project. I think there might be some confusion about the application that staff is reviewing and whatever information you have on that project. So I would work with staff on that project, but like Tiffany said, I don't believe that is a high occupancy housing project.
Okay, I have not received an email. I did email last month asking for this particular subject to get put on one of the meeting agendas so that it could be discussed in more detail. And I haven't received an email response to that request either.
Alex?
My understanding is that project is a subdivision. I believe if they use PRD standards, that it'll go to council. I don't, is not at the point that it's coming to P and Z. It's not required. But staff just sent you an email today to talk about that project.
All right, then I will look in my emails again and respond to the email. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your questions, Alicia. Are there any other questions or concerns from people online? Hearing none, I want to thank Tiffany. It looks like we'll be hearing from you again at our next meeting on the 27th. So thank you.
I tried to put as many things on as possible on your next meeting.
Thanks, we appreciate that.
So we'll have two public zoning code text amendment, public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have item 6B, a request for preliminary block plat approval for Canyon Del Rio Phase Two, located at 3200 East Butler Avenue. And it looks like Alex will be giving us a presentation. Thank you.
Oh, I don't know why I clicked that, sorry. Give me a moment while I pull up the presentation.
Okay, I'm here tonight to present the Canyon Del Rio Phase Two Preliminary Block Plat. This is coming to you because it actually was submitted under old code when all the plats came to P and Z and council. So we're just continuing that process. Our new code has different provisions about who reviews. CDR Dev Corp, corp, sorry, LTD rolls off the tongue. Request preliminary block plat approval for Canyon Del Rio Phase Two. It's 119.60 acre residential subdivision. It's located at 3200 East Butler. It's in single-family residential and medium-density residential zones. To the north is Canyon Del Rio Phase One, which is currently under development. There's some property that's highway commercial zoned. There's also some high-density residential zone, as well as some MR and R1 parcels. To the east, we have vacant land in rural residential zone, proposed to be developed as a single-family residential subdivision. And that's to the east, down, down here-ish. To the south, we have both vacant land and single-family homes. Some of them are in the city jurisdiction in the ER, that estate residential zone. Some of them are actually in Coconino County jurisdiction. And then to the west, we have vacant land in the ER zone that's owned by Little America Hotel. The preliminary block plat, CDR is proposing a maximum of 1,426 residential units, over 200,000 square feet of commercial space, and 54 acres of open space. The Phase One plat that came through years ago created a track Z for future development of Phase Two. And that's the piece we're looking at now, is creating blocks in that, what used to be track Z. The Phase Two plat contains 119 acres. It's being subdivided into four blocks of land, five tracks, and the required right-of-way for John Wesley Powell Boulevard. and the required right, right-of-way for John Wesley Powell Boulevard, as well as Harold Ranch Road. So here is a teeny tiny plan of Phase Two. You can, I tried to highlight in yellow, but I don't know that you can read that text. But this is block Q1, Q2, which is kind of this long skinny piece here. There's block Q3, which is down here at the bottom. There's R2, R3, which is this central chunk here. And then R4, 5, which is this chunk. Then there's some tracks, track ZZ, unaffiliated with the, the band, is private drainage up here. And then there's tract A down here, which is open space and that floodplain from the Rio de Flag. Tract B, which is this north, the portion of the floodplain north of Harold Ranch Road that will contain open space, utilities, possible future wells and the floodplain. Tract C is over here, that's planned for a detention basin. And then tract S is in this back corner here, which is set aside for future development. You can also see here where the proposed John Wesley Powell Boulevard cuts through the development, as well as the right-of-way for Harold Ranch Road. It's the existing road. We just don't actually have right-of-way dedication for it. So this sort of formalizes that. When we're looking at subdivision plats, we're looking for conformance with development standards, the Flex F zoning code, the subdivision standards, and the engineering standards. So finding number one is the zoning code. The property included in this plat is zoned both R1 and MR. The proposed blocks meet the minimum parcel dimensions stipulated by the zoning code. These blocks will be further subdivided. And that's when you're really looking at whether it meets those, those individual parcel standards. Right now, they're so huge, they probably meet every zone's requirements, so. So those individual lots will get determined when we subdivide those blocks. They'll also need to meet the density requirements of either the zoning code or the density identified on the lot coverage building information table that's shown in the block plat. So that's part of the history of Canyon Del Rio, where it was, there are tables that outline proposed density for different blocks. And it was tied to, I believe, a settlement agreement as well. So there's kind of a, there's some flexibility with density as far as moving it from block to block and meeting zoning standards unless the table says you can do less density and then you can't do less than that density. So it's good times. So we also are meeting the natural resources. A natural resource protection plan was provided as part of this preliminary block plat. The floodplains are being preserved at 100%. I believe that's our top priority as far as resources. So that's, that's great. And then specific resources will get nailed down when we start doing those subdivisions again of making sure the individual blocks are meeting it. But you should also know that the development agreement allows Canyon Del Rio to be looked at more holistically. That in, in trying to get more density and more residential units, that there are resource banks that allow you to set aside areas of land for tree and slope resources so that maybe you're a little short on this development, but then you're covered with another development. So it's able to sort of be utilized throughout the development. Parks, open space, pedestrian and bicycle facilities. CDR proposes approximately 54 acres of open space. The plat's showing the proposed Foots Trail alignments. And those will be constructed as parcels develop and the final alignment worked out. Each parcel will be required to meet open space and civic space requirements of the development. And then the John Wesley Powell roadway section includes bike lanes, sidewalks, and a foots underpass. Finding number two is the subdivision standards. So we're looking at the preliminary plat procedures and application requirements. Like I said, this is falling under old code, so that's why we're talking about this today. Minimum required subdivision improvements include lot design, street design, easement design, block design. And that's, I look at that more as block-like streets and parcels block. So again, a lot of this information will be determined when we start subdividing these larger pieces of land. And then the third finding is meeting the engineering standards. A public systems analysis was conducted to confirm preliminary compliance with engineering standards. But we really determine that compliance in the next step is when they submit for civil plans. And that's when we're getting into all the, the fun engineering details. Of access and traffic. A new traffic impact analysis was required of this project because of site plan changes, outdated traffic information, and to justify a lower roadway classification coming down through Q and OP. Off-site improvements include that right-of-way should be reserved for roundabouts at certain intersections along John Wesley Powell. And then this proportional cost share, which I get to in the conditions because that's still under discussion. We're working with the applicant to determine timing and, and percentages and costs and stuff like that. Water and wastewater, we have a WISA that's dated from July of 2015. It was based on the demands of 1,715 units, so more than what is currently being proposed, as well as the commercial development. The DA had a cash-in-loue payment for future water storage at the issuance of the 400th dwelling unit. And up to two well sites. Remember how I mentioned that that one track could include well sites? So it's just allowing that to happen if the city identifies that a great location for a well would be there. The WISA does not identify the need for off-site improvements for CDR. So this is all internal to the development. Stormwater, they did a drainage impact analysis in 2013. And a preliminary drainage report was done in 2025. As the blocks are developed, each block will provide stormwater mitigation on site. The preliminary plat focuses on detention necessary for those public improvements, like John Wesley Powell going through, as well as some of the drainage for development on the Phase One portion. Because I believe the whole thing, pretty much the whole site is draining downwards towards that Rio. So some of Phase One is actually being mitigated on Phase Two. LID, low-impact development. Water quality requirements are required to meet the half-inch threshold, less than the current one-inch code requirement per the settlement agreement in 2013. So staff recommendation. Staff, me, recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission, in accordance with the findings presented in this report, forward the preliminary block plat for Canyon Del Rio Phase Two to City Council with a recommendation of approval with the following conditions. The first condition is that the final plats for each phase shall be submitted in conformance with the preliminary plat, including the phasing plan and map sheets PH1, 01 and PH02 of the preliminary block plat of Canyon Del Rio Phase Two. And that each phase and parcel of Canyon Del Rio plat must meet all requirements independently. And the second is that the final plat for Canyon Del Rio Phase Two must meet the conditions of approval in the IDS Approval Comment Letter dated June 5, 2025, as well as the conditions in the Traffic Impact Analysis Approval Memo dated July 10 of 2025. And here's the caveat. Staff and the applicant are continuing to discuss the proportional share contribution for the improvements at the Wetstone and Forest Street intersection, as well as responsibility for payment of that proportional share. The conditions related to improvements at the Wetstone and Forest Street intersection may be revised or removed depending on the outcome of those discussions. So I really didn't want to hold up the plat while we worked through that negotiation, so. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions, and if you have any questions for me. And I have staff here. I, I drew a staff here too.
Thank you, Alex. Does anybody have questions?
I, I have a question on the cost share. I don't know how much you can share, but what's holding it up? Why are we still discussing, I guess is my question.
I think, I think it's just a timing thing that, that that traffic impact analysis was done kind of mid-application. And then staff was asking for additional information about certain intersections. And so that came in really late in the game. And so we put that condition on, the applicant was made aware of that condition right as we were approving the, administratively approving the plat. And so I think it was just that we haven't had the time to have those discussions. And because this is such a large project and there have been so many negotiations already with, with CDR, the applicant, partnering with the city on John Wesley Powell and working through that, that it's all sort of intertwined. So I think it's just, it was just a timing issue mostly. Ideally, we would have figured that out and then brought it to you. But we need this to keep moving forward and stay on track for building this road. And so that's kind of where it is.
And I guess the other part of my question that, if I understood right, there's the 52.9% cost share. Is that dollar value already set or is that to be determined?
I don't believe that we have a dollar amount at this point, at least the city. We're not, I don't even think they've started design for, for that improvement at this point. I believe the applicant has done some preliminary numbers, but I don't think that's been sort of reviewed and discussed at this point, so.
Okay. I, I guess my concern is, having some familiarity with the JWB Powell project, the developer engineers tend to come up with different dollar values than the city engineers. And so it can tend to put the city in a bad spot if we're not careful.
And I think the city is aware of that. And that's often why sometimes in, sometimes in development, developers can do things faster and cheaper than the city. And so sometimes it actually ends up the city providing money for the city's share of an improvement and letting the developer move ahead with, with design and construction. They have to meet certain standards because it would be a partially city-funded project. But there is that flexibility too, so.
Other questions?
Mary, I'm looking at Mary, so.
First, I just wanted to say I really appreciated the detailed review and the comments by the IDS. That was really thorough. Before I get into the meat and potatoes of this, I wanted to ask, since we were talking a little bit about traffic, whatever happened to the raising of Butler intersection? The Butler and Forest Street intersection? I thought that was supposed to happen before almost any Canyon Del Rio.
I believe that that project is being worked on, that it's, I believe that capital engineering has certain percentage complete design plans and that it's part of our capital improvement plan and budgeted. I see that Jeff Baumann is online, so maybe he can respond to that.
Hey, Alex, it's Steph Santana.
Here's Steph.
Transportation Engineering. Jeff was actually going to head home right now, so I don't want him to, to hop on while he's driving, so. Yes, so the Butler Fourth Project, we've got about 30% plans. There's been a little bit of a holdup. We're working on some traffic analysis for Little America wanting to move a roundabout. So we are at 30% plans and they will be moving forward, I, I hope, very, very soon to get those to 60, 90 hundreds.
Thank you.
And then, and just a general comment, since this was an all-new site plan that was written, it would have been really nice if the cover sheet had been updated to reflect current zoning and uses based on the rezonings that had been completed to date and sale of properties to date. Because now, those uses now vary with the original expectations. Just out of transparency for everybody that looks at these. So I just wanted to make that statement that, I noticed that. And then most of my comments are with regard to, you know, being the liaison to the Open Spaces Commission. My comments are mostly about trails and open space. Are the foots only along sidewalks? Or are there any foots trails that actually go through open space? And I know like on the, the page that showed the foots, it said it was more, that they would meet the intent of connectivity, but the trails are subject to, to change as tracks are developed. So I just, that concerns me that it often pushes it to an afterthought. And I just wish those were a little bit more elevated in the plan at, at this stage. Can you comment about foots?
I don't know if I should, but I will. So not only does this project have foots trails that are planned to, to connect across the, across the site, there's also sort of more local level like tie-ins between, between proposed developments and those foots. So I feel like overall Canyon Del Rio has the potential to have all this amazing trail system throughout it. I think staff and engineering staff, Steph can probably jump in and correct me after I'm done mutilating this. But my understanding is that staff has very clear ideas of, of where this general alignment is. But there's also the desire to not necessarily put, create an easement at this point before we know how certain blocks are being developed. So that it's not just that, you know, the foots will be ignored until later, but really making sure the foots has this optimal alignment and is working with the terrain and working with resources and coordinating it with, with potentially houses and parcels and lots that are being created.
Okay, that makes me feel better. And I certainly, and I certainly understand the right-of-way issue.
Steph, do you want to add anything about foots at this point?
Thanks, Alex. I, I know as these different parcels are being developed, we are making those comments of trying to keep the foots not along some of those, those roadways. I can let you guys know that a more recent submittal that they submitted, it is not along the roadway. it is not along the roadway throughout majority of it, so that's a positive. So we do plan to keep making those comments and hopefully pushing for that foots to stay out of that right-of-way of the road. I think that was the main question there, if I got that right. Thank you.
Yes, that's exactly what I was getting at, because I noticed like on the parcels in question here, you know, there was like, it showed an existing trail, but then it, you know, basically dead-ended at a parcel that was developed in Phase One. So I'm like, you know, are we missed, are there lost opportunities for connectivity when we're not looking at a greater overview? And I think that's where, in my experience, we, Flagstaff in general, and our developers here in general, often miss the mark, you know? But I admit, I hail from the land of master-planned communities in Southern California, and I'm just used to seeing really robust, well-thought-out, well-planned parks, open space, trails that are in there from the get-go. And so I guess I'm always slightly disappointed when I see things that come along like this and hope that those pieces are getting put in along the way. Of the open space of the 54 acres, is that primarily all reserved for floodplain?
I believe so, yes. It's those tracks along the Rio.
So, and then, again, I'll just express my disappointment in that there's no open space. There's no, it's not a park. There's not a regional park, a pocket park. And I don't mean regional on the grand scale. I mean, a large park for Canyon Del Rio, or, you know, I would hope that there might be some pocket parks in some of the individual parcels. You know, because it is such a large master-planned community, and there would have just been an opportunity for so much open space and trails and wildlife corridors, that that concerns me, so. Other than that, those are my comments.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
I see CJ.
I'm sorry. CJ?
I had a question about the wells. I was wondering what triggers their development and how is the cost sharing or the cost? Do we know at this point who would incur it?
That would be determined by, I believe, water services staff, that they would do an analysis of the location and determine whether... I don't know if they use like the sticks or what they do, but they would determine whether there would be like a productive well at this site. And my understanding is that it, that that easement allows the city to place a city well on CDR's property. I don't believe that there's a cost-sharing agreement for the wells. I believe there was, there was a fee tied to water storage. But again, this would all be reviewed by water services staff? Does that answer the question? Okay.
Yeah, it does. It's just, you know, having worked at a irrigation district and a water thing, it's like anytime you have water, just, you don't want to let that opportunity go, I guess is my feeling.
Dave says he can expand on my haphazard response.
I'm Dave Mills, the development engineer. So the well sites, there's two well sites potential. They would be, they're basically just set aside by the developer, but they would be entirely developed by the city. The way that our capacity fees work is that the developers, every water meter that goes in pays a capacity fee, and that's what goes to water production. So for any development, we can't require the developer to do any cost share for the water production. That's separate from storage or distribution, which can be and has been done, but for the actual production of the water, that's why they just are setting side to side, but all the costs would be on the city.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Anything from the public? Yes, from the builder?
Hi, Commissioners, Charity Lee, Capstone Homes. I just wanted to address one of the questions that came from Commissioner Norton regarding the trails and the open space. So our development overall as a master-planned community is preserving 54 acres, which is above the required open space. But then we're also, per subdivision, required to meet open space requirements. So the project itself is preserving a substantial amount of open space. And the trail network, we are being thoughtful on where we're placing the trails. It's going to be a very natural corridor. There are some times when it's just not possible, and some of the subdivisions that we're currently planning, there's little segments that maybe will be adjacent to a small stretch of road because of the topography, because Canyon Del Rio, it's full of canyons and it's a very hilly area. But we are being very thoughtful on where we're putting the trail network because we want our residents to enjoy nature, and that's part of what makes Canyon Del Rio special.
Thank you, Charity. Anything else? I do want to thank Alex for her presentation. I believe we need a motion if there's no other comments or questions.
I'll try to make a motion here.
Okay, thank you.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission, in accordance with the findings presented today in this report, forward the preliminary block plat for Canyon Del Rio Phase Two to City Council with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
So CJ seconded the motion. Is there any other discussion? Discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Under other business, is there any miscellaneous items to and from commissioners? Hearing none. We are adjourned at 5:53 PM. Thank you.